What is my?
I'll just go.
Put it inside very much. Have you turned it up this way?
Oh, thanks.
Okay.
Actually, this is.
So. Can I pull this on the back and turn them on? Hmm.
Oh, great.
I'm inducted.
What?
Guys always fucking be.
I stole a piece of paper from somebody.
You've got some.
I'm not scribbling. I'm not paying attention.
Absolutely. That's why I got mine.
Great. Thank you so much.
I am going to mention that the agenda didn't go out just because there's audience on the. Zoom and I just. Yeah, I just don't want it to be fodder for miss. Misinformation out in the community. So. And then when I open the meeting. With. With kind explanation.
I want you to say something that's like that whole. It'll I couldn't send out the email because I was having a baby excuse.
I think that's.
Huh? Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Yeah. But. I hear you. All right. I think we're all here. Let me just check my text one more time here. All right. So. We will call the special study session of January 29th to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Council clerk is not present. Council primor.
Here.
Council writer is not present. Counselor Pesezo.
Here.
Counselor buyers not present. Counselor. R. Miller is not present. Mayor Eris Flood.
Here.
Present. Mary, we do not have a forum tonight.
So we do not have a forum. I do want to mention that. Uh, the agenda for this special meeting didn't go out. It usually goes out about four days. Um, prior to the meeting and and some of the counselors said that they missed it. On their calendar. So. Um. It it's it was just inadvertent. Um, some crossover communication and. We're just getting our stride under the under the new administration. So. It's certainly understandable. We can go ahead and take a presentation, though, Dave, I believe.
You can take a presentation as long as.
Yeah.
Or no.
There were no decisions anyway. It was a study session. So we'll just go ahead and we're so glad to have you. And I'll just go ahead and hand it over to the staff for introductions and this meeting is being recorded. So. We'll be able to share this important data with the council members before it gets on to an actual council agenda for decision making time. Staff.
Okay. Did you want to say anything to us or?
Okay, I'd like to introduce Josiah Close, HDR Engineering, and he's here to present the draft water rate study results.
Thank you, Tessa. Thank you.
And we went over kind of the abstract methodologies and procedures in November last year. And so. We're coming back after we've worked for a couple of months with the draft results and looking for your input and feedback. We have those draft results as well as some rate design alternatives that we just like some feedback and direction on. And like you said, we're here just to present some information for the good of the council. So we'll look at the purpose of a rate study again. We'll talk about the key assumptions that impacted the results of the study to date. And then we'll look at where we're going forward in our next steps. So, ooh. Oh, what happened there? Hold on a second. It jumped to the end. I apologize. Goodness sakes. Okay. We'll do the manual. All right. I apologize for that. Um, so in general, a rate study, we undertake the analysis to look at the revenues of the water utility. And ultimately, what we want is for those to cover our expenses, both operating and capital. And that becomes the cost to provide service to the customers. And so that's our ultimate goal when we develop these studies. And we have an industry manual pictured here, the American Waterworks Association M1 manual. And that outlines the procedures and the methodologies that we use when developing a rate study. Methods of accumulating costs and how we distribute those costs to different customer classes, those types of discussions. We also want to incorporate prudent financial planning criteria. So some examples would be like a debt service coverage ratio, making sure. We're not too leveraged and that the water utility is able to cover the costs of the issued debt. Look at prudent rate funding of capital. So within water rates, we want to make sure that there is a component that goes towards capital. Renewal and replacement of the system on an annual basis. And so we want to make sure that the rates have that piece. We'll also look at reserve fund balances for the water utility, making sure that we can provide cash flow needs for the utility as well as. Funding available for any catastrophic or issues that may come for the system. So we want to have reserves in place in those instances. And then ultimately, coming back to cost based water rates. So based on methodologies in the M1 manual and looking at by the different customer classes. Making sure that the rates that we charge the customers are based on those costs that we're incurring. So this is the three step process we look at when we conduct a water rate study. We have. These three analyses that really build upon each other. So the first is the revenue requirement analysis. And that determines our balance or deficiency of funds. Essentially, we look at the revenues compared to the expenses. And that gives us what level of rates we need to set in order to cover those costs. We take the results from a specific test here and we put that into a cost of service analysis. And what a cost of service analysis does is it identifies the functions of the utility primarily in water that's going to be. Average day water use, peak day water use and some customer related costs. And we then distribute those costs to the different customer classes of service. So residential, multi residential. Commercial irrigation based on how they utilize the system. So the total amount of water that they use. As well as any characteristics around the seasonality of water use. Those all contribute to the cost to provide service for them. We then take those two analyses results, the overall rate level that we need as well as the. Related costs for each customer class and we can go into the rate design. And we want to design rates to accomplish the level of revenue as well as making sure we're meeting the proportionality between customer classes when we design rates. So some key components of this study, we calculated the revenues based on the current rates. And the customer data that we had, oh, my little box is in the way. I didn't. There we go. That way people can see. So that way that helps us independently verify the revenues and make sure that we're matching with what the city is actually receiving. And we use that data as well through the cost of service again to make sure that we're incorporating the proportional relationship for each customer class. So it's based on that data and how they use the water system. We started with the 2023 24 budget. And then we project that out into the future based on escalation factors. So for each line item within the budget. We'll look at what the nature of that line item is, whether it's salaries or benefits and materials and supplies, those kind of things. Um, we'll look at some standard industry escalation factors as well as more local information. So that we can project those costs into the future. Uh, and we did that in this study through 2023 or 2033 34. Um, and that's so that we can incorporate the long term cost primarily on the capital side. So we can anticipate those costs sooner. And ideally design rates with a smooth transition in mind so that we can avoid any rate shop. We have additional staffing incorporated for 24 25. And that's about 45% allocated to water. Um, and I believe that is refilling a position that has been vacant or positions. Um, and then we, everything else is as the budget. We then utilize the city's capital improvement plan. And we have each capital project in the year it's anticipated to be completed. And we go about identifying the funding source for that project, whether that be rates or reserves, grant funding. Uh, so that we make sure we close the loop and we're funding all these projects that we're identifying. As I mentioned, the test year for the cost of service. So in this case, the single year we're utilizing for that is 23 24, which is the first year. Of the five year rate transition that we're that we have developed to this point. So diving into that revenue requirement a little further again. In general, that compares our revenues to our expenses and from that we can determine if there's a balance or deficiency of funds. And we can then use that information to design a rate transition plan. As I mentioned, in this case, it's a five year period. And we've looked out 10 years for the expenses again, just to incorporate any long term costs that we want to make sure they're on the horizon. Um, the reason we look at often a two to five year period for rate setting is just because the assumptions by year five. Become a little outdated. And so we recommend revisiting those plans from time to time. We also want to evaluate the water utility on a standalone basis. So ensuring that there's no other enterprise funds. Uh, coming into the water utility so that the rates that we're charging can sustain the expenses that we've incurred. And we accumulate costs on what's called a cash basis methodology. So for the revenue requirement, some key issues that we are seeing. So purchase water costs through Medford. Uh, they're going to be doing capital projects in the future, which have a specific benefit for the talent Ashland Phoenix. Uh, pipeline. And so based on their calculation, that's going to result in future increases. More proportionally more to the tap clients. And so we've incorporated that. Into the purchase water costs and we pulled out that expense so that we can see that. We also have, as many people know, the supply chain issues and some inflationary measures in materials and supplies. Um, those are impacting the results as well as we try to keep up with those costs as they're increasing. Um, utility costs as well as insurance costs have been going up. Pretty substantially as well. Another important issue is the debt service. We're. Avoiding the balloon payments in the future by prepayment of those of that. And so that does result in a higher annual. Uh, on average payment, but you avoid the very large balloon payments in the future by doing that. So we've incorporated that. On the capital side, which we'll talk about on the next slide, we have a number of renewal and replacement as well as regulatory related capital projects. Um, which are impacting the revenue requirement as well. We also have around 50,000 in bad debt expenses that has been lingering for a few years. And so in 24 25, we're anticipating that we will write that off. And so that is an additional expense. And then finally, the reserve fund balances for the water fund are continuing to decline and at the lowest levels. Um, that we've seen in the past 10 years. And so we're also seeing that in the revenue requirement hit, making sure that we're. Keeping up with that to make sure again that we have the reserves available for. The cash flow needs of the water utility as well as having the funds there in case there is any catastrophic failures or emergencies. So specifically related to the capital improvement plan. Uh, we have a meter replacement program that we're going to start out in the future, but short term we have. Um, next year. The replacement of the water meters. We have a grant from ARPA for that, a significant component of that. Um, but they're about 15 years or older. So they're much past their useful life and we want to address that. There's some regulatory related capital improvements as well that we need to take care of. Via mandates. And so some of those are the water management conservation plans, risk and resiliency assessment and emergency response plan. The water master plan updating that and seismic resiliency plan. We also have approximately 20 to 30% of the system consisting of asbestos concrete pipe. And so we're. Trying to incorporate that into our capital improvement plan to replace that as that has been deemed by the EPA to be toxic material. Um, in their assessment of asbestos. So we're trying to include that as well.
That's a good question.
I'm fine.
Um, yeah. So as far as asbestos, my understanding that it wasn't dangerous for, you know, human consumption of asbestos was dangerous if you breathe it. But in the pipes, it wasn't a concern for toxicity. I'm I'm just wondering, did I get that wrong?
I believe you're correct. I don't know the exact details. I think when it's disturbed is when it's typically the most volatile.
Okay. All right. So then so basically they're wearing out. That's why we need to replace them.
Yes.
Not because of dangers of.
Not no current. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions? So when we look at a summary of the capital improvement plan here, we can see this is identified by source of funding. So the dark gray is our capital reserve. And so we'll show on the following slide, we fund that through a mechanism again. Within rates on an annual basis, make sure that we're keeping up with capital projects. And so you can see there we utilize that source primarily. And then there is the meter replacement project that we're anticipating for next year. And again, that is. Um, by the grant funds that we are going to receive.
Question. So are we saying that the 24 to 25 is certain stuff in the following year because we're going to eat into that?
Yes, that's that's a function of it, right? And we'll see, I have a slide on the reserves and you'll be able to see that mechanism. Um, so it's kind of, you know, checking accountish type of deal, right? Where we some years are a little higher, some are lower. Um, and that does play into, yeah, how we determine what kind of rate level we need to be at.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Uh, I do see, you know, when you look at the pattern of the capital reserve. Um, and that that there's a pretty good bump and for 24 25, was that just for, were you just planning ahead for this?
It depends on the projects that were slated for that year. What we did when we took a look at the water capital piece. In order to keep the rates as smooth as possible, we tried to move projects from. Let's say, for instance, something was slated for 27 28, but it was a large dollar amount. We tried to scooch it out maybe a year or two later in order to keep the rates as smooth as possible.
Yeah, great. And then, um, and then for 24 25. You have like a, like a, you know, it's like an unusual pattern there as well. Were you guys just planning ahead for the water? Um, meter.
Yeah, that's part of it. I think probably Robert would be the best person to ask that question because he's more in tune to what was he had planned for 24 25.
But it's just the ending fun balance, right?
Right.
So, yeah, so that's just one thing.
Right. But it's, I mean, it's a reserve that has an unusual pattern. So I'm just really. Kind of. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we try to keep, and I'll show you here. I can go to it. We. This, uh, the green is our funding of the reserve. So what we try to do is have a smooth funding of the reserve. However, the expenses coming out of the reserve. Are, um, that's pretty typical of a capital improvement plan are more lumpy, right? And so. We try to goal seek by the end of the year or at the end of the period to make a smooth transition to cover those costs. But in each year. That expense of projects can be, it won't be as smooth. Um, and and this also helps to smooth. If you do have a delay in project, you don't lose that funding source. It's in the reserve. And if we do the project the next year, ideally, then we would have those funds available.
One more question. If I may, do SDCs contribute to that capital reserve?
They do.
Okay. Well, that explains a lot, right?
Do not have a lot in water STCs. I'm trying to think off the top of my head. It's maybe a little over $100,000.
Yeah.
And we didn't even receive any STCs last month.
But we did last year, right? I mean.
I know that there was an issue that the Royce, Royce Street Waterline took a chunk of the STCs if I.
Okay. Good. Thanks. That's informative. I appreciate it.
So on this chart, this chat summarizes our expenses and the total within the revenue requirement for each year. So you see the dark gray. Uh, boxes at the very bottom. That's our total O and M expenses. So salaries, benefits. Uh, materials and supplies, utilities, equipment, all those types of expenses. And those increase going out over time based on escalation factors that we talked about earlier, making sure that we're keeping pace with inflation. We then have above that the blue boxes are related to the purchase water costs from Medford Water. And again, the increases there are tied to what we know as far as the future with how tap will be impacted by their capital program. The orange box above that is our net annual debt service. And then above that was that rate funded capital component that I was talking about. Um, so that we can fund that reserve within this time period and make sure we cover the capital costs as well as maintain a minimum level of reserves. And that. Uh, solid bar is our current rate revenues.
And if we could just get a few words from Tessa about the net annual debt services that on the new, mostly that on the new cake.
This has to do with the, the. The bond refinancing for the. It was, it was like original tap inter-type bonds. It was, it was a refinancing. That is the. The items that have the O and M payments.
And none of it is, none of it is from the balance of the water tanks?
No, this including the water tank. Yeah, it did include that, but the balloon payments are tied to the four.
So it's really the consolidation of those of those debts. I think it was in like twenty fifteen or something, wasn't it? Twenty sixteen?
Something like.
Yeah, okay. Now I got it. Thanks. Great. Thank you.
So that that solid line is our current revenues. And then the dash line going up is what we're. Projecting in our rate transition plan, the level of revenues that we need to meet those expenses. As you can see, as we go out over time. Those expenses that we're anticipating get further eroded as we go out if we don't. Adjust those rate revenues. And this is the slide I was talking about with reserves. So you'll see, we do separate the SDC reserve, reserve funds. So that we can keep those separate because the projects that those apply to are not the same as our general capital fund. So the blue box at the bottom is our water operating fund, basically. And what we want to keep in there is ninety days of. Reserves, ninety days of O and M as a reserve again to keep. Pace with any cash flow needs of the water utility as we incur costs. And then bill the customers and then we receive payment. That's a multi-month process. And so we want to make sure we have funds available for that. And then the orange, you can see that's the capital fund, what I was talking about as we contribute to that fund. And then we have expenses coming out of that fund. That's where you see the up and down motion of it. So that we can continue at the end of it again to hold some money available in case there is an emergency or a interruption of revenue. Maybe a drought or some other kind of instance, we have some money available for capital projects as well.
Can I ask a question? So SDC fund reimburse, I don't, what is that?
There's two components to the SDC fund. One is a reimbursement portion of the SDC and one is an improvement. Yeah. So those are separate.
Yeah, I know what the improvement is, but I don't know what the reimbursement is.
That's something. It is for, I guess it's for replacement of a CIP project, a replacement of an asset, if I understand that's what it's for. The the SDCs here at the city of talent, that's something that I need to really understand a lot more because of the two pieces that's involved with that.
And the reimbursement or the SDCs, well, I could ask, this is not an important question now, but so it sounds to me like the reimbursement fund. Like reimburses us for capital improvements that have happened.
Yeah.
And improvement is. But which will happen or that what we have in our CIP plan for the next five years, whatever. Okay, great. That's great.
And then another thing I just wanted to bring up, having an O and M target of ninety days is about as bare bones as you possibly can get. What, what do other utilities that you have shared?
So. S and P comes out with, and Bitch does as well, the rating agencies come out with. Every year their averages of what utilities are, AAA rated utility will often have almost two years of reserves. On hands of revenue. So the average is usually around a year is what we see. Again, that's meeting cash flow and contingency for catastrophic emergencies and things like that.
So this is opposed to what we're planning for, which is ninety days, right? Did I understand that correctly?
Right. That's kind of a.
It seems short, like ninety days seems short.
Right. And if we go, if we go with a large, I'm gonna say if we go right off the bat and say, let's go with a six month or maybe a twelve month, it's going to impact the rates.
Yeah. Yeah. Last question I have is if I'm looking at this SDC reimbursement improvement, I would. Like seeing, I would, I would expect to see the reimbursement decrease as the improvement increases. Am I just not understanding how that works?
In this period, we didn't have any capital projects. So we're identified as a funding source. But I don't know, again, Robert might know the best about which projects were.
I didn't see any in the, in the, in the five-year capital plan and five-year capital plan is three years old.
The five-year capital plan is three years old?
I think it's three years old.
Okay.
And we do want to keep. We do want to keep those funds. We want to treat them very carefully because they are different than just like a general reserve. There are some regulations around that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? So now that we've determined the level of rate revenue we need. Based on our expenses, we go into the cost of service analysis. What the cost of service analysis does again is to, we look at the function of the water utility and we can. Allocate the costs by function and then. We look at distributing those costs between the different customer classes. So with a water utility. As I mentioned before, typically we're looking at functions of average day water use, peak day water use and customer related costs. So to distribute the costs based on the average day proportion, it would just be the total amount of. Water that, for example, the residential customer class uses, that would be the proportional share of costs that we would distribute to them. So we go through this for again, the entire line item of the budget, all the expenses. Debt service, rate funded capital, all these components. And we go through and we distribute them to all the different customer classes based on how they utilize the system. And we come up with their cost to provide service. And we can compare that then to their current contribution of revenues. And that will give us again, another balance or deficiency to see if they are contributing their fair share more or less. And with the cost of service, this hasn't been done that we know of for the city yet. So this would be the first one. We want to walk carefully through it because it is the first one as well as with the fire recently. The characteristics of your system. Were concerned that they're still fluid, right? So replacement of. The older houses, commercial buildings, those etc. The usage characteristics of new buildings are often much more efficient. So the results are going to come out of the cost of service. We don't want to tip too far in either direction. So we're going to take. A soft handed approach to the cost of service adjustments, but it gives us a data point. And so. What we typically recommend is then after you've performed one in the future, five or 10 years. You can then make sure that those. Proportional allocation of costs between the customer classes. That gives you another data point so that we can go in the right direction because what we don't want to do is. Move costs to one customer class in one cost of service and then come back and have to move it back the other way. So we want to avoid over adjusting. And so we did, we have a couple of rate design alternatives and. They vary in degree that will show you now. Let's get into that. So. And first of all, I wanted to show you guys, this is the last 10 years of. Rate increase. This is a survey done across the country and the water and sewer rate increases. Have been significantly higher than the CPI or basket of goods, even labor and things like that. So this is a tough conversation I'm having with a lot of clients. But the reality is that water and sewer utilities are exposed to a lot of risk when it comes to labor, materials and supplies. As well as the other CPI items. So that's creating a lot of pressure as well as the aging infrastructure. I'm starting to see quite a bit of competition between utilities. For the same materials and because there is a constraint still working through the pandemic backlog of supplies, we're seeing people. Almost have to fight or duck the lion pipes and those kinds of things, right? So that again drives up cost. So the first. Alternative we have is called the status quo. So maintaining your current rate structure. The only, which is a fixed meter charge by meter size. Varying costs based on the size of your service meter and then a four tiered consumption charge. And one change that we've made to all of them is we're transitioning the fixed charge to being based on. The American Water Works Association weighting, which is developed based on the safe operating capacity. Based on the diameter of the meter. So how much water can come through that? And this is a industry standard practice. And over time, when you adjust rates, we typically see this happen where those ratios get out of whack. And so. As part of this transition, we're trying to true that up because we have. A demonstratable capacity for each meter size that we can tie that fixed charge to. So under the current. Rate structure. If we maintain that, some benefits would be the continuity with the rate structure. So customers wouldn't have to get used to a new rate structure. As well as it keeps the first tier zero to three thousand does not currently have a consumption charge attached to it. So. The low use water customers receive a benefit from that. Some of the drawbacks would be you don't incentivize that water use. So there is no price signal essentially for that first tier of water. And then this does not address any of the cost of service differences that we would see between customer classes. So. This would maintain the same rate structure for all customers, which we currently have for the city. This isn't, yeah, it's kind of hard to see. But what, yeah.
Really quickly, I just want to make sure what you were describing is just whether or not we want to change the model, but not, not. I mean, we could use the, the status quo model and still find ourselves working towards planning for. The. You know, the. The reserves that you were describing and all of that, right?
Yes, good question.
You're going to be comparing model to model, right?
Yes, they're all have the same revenue target. So all, all of the alternatives. Will hit the same, that same revenue requirement target we have. Yeah, good question. So we maintain the same fixed charge by meter size for all customers. And we just changed those ratios slightly over time. We proposed doing that over five years, just again, to make sure that we minimize the impact to customers. And we maintain the four tier consumption charges, zero to three thousand. Again, that would be maintained at no cost and then three to six thousand, six to nine thousand and over nine thousand. And then with bill impacts, we see here at varying usages for the present rates as well as the proposed rates. Zero, five thousand, ten thousand and twenty thousand. So the alternative one would be to maintain the same approach for the fixed charge. So truing up those meter weightings based on the AWWA. Equivalent meter ratios. But we would incorporate a charge for the first tier. So the zero to three thousand. And this would help us to incentivize efficient water use within that tier. But it would maintain the same structure for customers. So there would be that familiarity. And obviously the drawback to that would be low use water users would be impact more impacted more. Because we are now charging for that water usage. And under this alternative, we still maintain the same structure for all customer classes. So it would not address any of the cost of service differences. So the only difference here, again, the fixed charges are the same as the status quo. We just see down at the bottom of that table. The zero to three thousand current now has a charge. And then we would rebalance the other tiers based on the peaking factors that we calculated. And when we calculate those peaking factors. We look at as a class, all the water usage by month. And we divide the max month by the average month. And that gives us the. Peaking factor or the difference between their average and their peak use. And again, we assign costs based on average day consumption and peak day consumption. And so this reflects. The additional capacity that the utility needs to provide for customer using water. For example, in the six to nine thousand or nine thousand and over, those costs to provide it with planning, purchase water. And the function of the water system, there's more cost to that. And so that's reflected in the tier pricing. So then what we see with bill impacts, and I will have a chart at the end, which compares. All of the alternatives because I realize it's hard to remember each individual alternative, but we will have the year one. Chart at the end so that we can see between alternatives. How that goes. So for.
Can I ask an alternative one? So. I think I understand, but you said that this, this rate structure encourages conservation. And at the same time, impacts low water users more.
Yes.
So that kind of sounds contradictory.
So if there is no price signal. Through. You know. An economic standpoint, we wouldn't have. Encouraging that conservation in the water use. But if we are charging for that and encouraging conservation through a price signal. We would then be impacting customers that currently use zero to three thousand gallons. They are not charged for that water. So if we do. Make that policy consideration to go towards charging for that amount of water usage in those in the first tier, then. It would impact them, but it would encourage efficient.
So as opposed to just being.
Yeah. And typically usage in that tier is pretty inelastic. So it doesn't change much based on price.
Okay. Um, can you, and as we're talking about these various usage, can you say like, you know, what would typically be maybe. You know, a senior citizen living by themselves, what would typically be a family of four, just to.
Yeah. And it depends. And and I can maybe put together a chart of some average usage that we could incorporate in the next presentation, just so you can see how many people within your system are using it. Typically, five thousand is about average for a customer. If, if you're retired, two people, you're probably closer to the three thousand. And if you have, you know, I have kids and a family and all that, you're probably closer to that ten thousand. Especially in the summer months, you know, you're going to see the averages pushing more towards fifteen to twenty thousand.
Thank you.
So alternative two. We use the same approach for the fixed charge that we've done in alternative one and status quo. But on the consumption charge, we move to. A unique structure for each customer class. And this is where. Excuse me, you'll see in the benefits, I note that we address some of those cost of service differences. So we base. The consumption charge for each customer class on how they utilize water. Now on residential, we're proposing moving to a three tiered structure. And this gets to what we were just talking about with a lot of. Average indoor use for most customers is going to be between zero and five thousand. When you look at some outdoor use or larger families, then you get into that. Second tier, five to twelve thousand. And typically the third tier, twelve thousand and over. Is outdoor use or more discretionary water use. And so that's why we have determined to make those breaks there. And then with residential as a whole, the class is. Much more similar than with other classes. Multi-family could be anything from duplexes. To apartment complexes. And so their usage characteristics within the customer class often vary quite a bit. Same thing with commercial. You may have. A small office or you may have a warehouse, all these use water differently. So what we propose would be using a uniform consumption charge for all of them. And what you'll see on the following page is that the average cost of water basically for each customer class. And what we do is incorporate that peak. And what we do is incorporate that peak. Water usage, I apologize, it's probably a little small.
It's, yeah, I was gonna say, can we blow that up just a little bit?
Let me see, okay, okay. So with residential, um because we're again ratioing this based on peaking factors, so that zero to five thousand. Is gonna come down from alternative one quite a bit to two dollars sixty-five cents. But we're using how the peaking factors from the data to. Uh really work on the spread. If you can see from the current rates. There's fifty cents or so uh between the tiers, whereas under this alternative two, we're seeing a much larger spread. And again, that's to recognize. The cost to provide service for a customer within the second or third tier is much different than. In the first tier. We have to design the water system differently for that. And with the multifamily, commercial and irrigation. We're incorporating their average and peak day water usage into their uniform rate. And that's why you see. An irrigation customer is going to be up at the seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh because they have much more seasonal water usage. And so we have to plan for the maximum amount of water that they'll use, whereas a commercial uh business. Often does not very much month to month. Uh based on business activity possibly, but typically it's very flat. And multifamily. Does not have the peak that residential typically does, however, some. Uh again, if it's a duplex or triplex, may have some outdoor water usage, although it would be minimal.
And efficient likely because it's one yard for multiple.
Yes, definitely. Uh and and larger complexes, especially new ones, will have an irrigation meter typically for outdoor water usage anyways. So what we can see when we revise tiers here is you will see some uh changes. That I'll point out like at the ten thousand gallons, because we are moving from. Not charging in the first tier as well as resizing those tiers, you'll have impacts. To customers um that may look different than the other alternatives. That's why we have more of a. It's about fifty cents. At ten thousand gallons, but then when you get up to twenty thousand, you'll see uh a much bigger difference. Then alternative three. Is essentially alternative two. It has the same consumption charges, but on the fixed side. We developed a water system replacement fee. And what this fee is designed to do is to go directly to capital. So we would identify that funding source, and that would be moved into reserve so that we have a steady and predictable. Revenue source for capital projects. Again, um these all hit the same revenue between. So what we did was we lowered the fixed charge uh on the per meter basis a little bit, and then we. Uh develop that water system replacement fee to take its place.
And is that? Applied to every water bill? I mean, there's a.
That would be a per account charge, yes. So what happened was we'll see a very minimal increase on the meter charges, but you see. Um just for example purposes, we started at two dollars. And then we added a dollar each year to get up that revenue source. So that by the end of the five years. We have a steady and predictable stream of revenue coming in for just capital project.
You chose those numbers as an example. Um would it be likely they'd be somewhere around those numbers?
Yeah, our our goal by the year uh twenty-seven, twenty-eight was to get close to what our rate funded capital component is. And we get uh a lot of the way there. But it would be uh probably a few years in the future before we reach that nexus between the two. Uh but that was kind of our starting target to see uh how much revenue uh would get there. So ideally. The goal of this, I think, would be to get that to equal your annual contribution to capital. But given some of the constraints we have. It wasn't quite enough uh to reach it. You you could definitely go to uh if this was something that the council liked. Uh we could increase that uh component to hit that target, for example.
One last question. So I just want to make sure I I understood the water system replacement fee would actually contribute towards the capital improvement fund.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And that's not to say that currently the meter charge doesn't, it just would be easily identified, right? That would be the benefit would be uh transparency for people looking at their bill. Yep, that's it.
Um also, think about what the water system replacement fee piece. Um we may have capital projects that are not currently identified in the five-year plan. We could have all of a sudden a big main break on Talon Avenue. That could be costing us four hundred. I don't, I only want to throw that in the universe, but I just did, sorry.
I think there was a main break over the weekend on Talon Avenue's way, so.
Anyways, it would be, that would help pay for that that's not been identified in the capital plan.
Yeah, great. So it's really not just capital improvements, but it's also emergency reserve.
The unknowns. And it's also really important to realize that the city of talent, at this point in time, we cannot get any additional loans. To pay for such projects. We're basically as. Up to. We're very high in debt until we pay off those um. Balloon payments. And then then probably in twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, then maybe we could take a look at possibly. Getting some debt financing for other larger projects within our city. But at this point in time, we are pay-as-you-go.
Yeah. Just for those who were not here at the time, we sort of knew that when we built that new. Water reserves, a water reservoir over rap. Um it was an informed decision that it would. Max us out pretty good. Eleanor?
Yeah, um so for the water system replacement fee, a couple of questions. Do we envision it leveling out at six bucks um in the fifth year or sixth year?
I would have to take a peek and see how close we get to that, but um. What we do with that rate funded capital, again, we try to capture the inflation of capital projects. So when we plan for those within the capital funding plan. We increase them. I think it's around three and a half percent a year so that we can incorporate. The cost of inflation on those materials. So ideally, that charge would. Uh if that was the goal um that we had with it, it would keep pace with that, so it would inflate slightly once we got up to that target as well.
Yeah, that's understood.
And then another thing, if we were to, let's say, start off with six dollars um per per month. Per account instead of two. We may not have to go as high. It would it would basically front load.
That's where I was going with that. I I feel like this is to to reduce the consumer shock. Of this alternative that so that's the two dollars and three dollars, then by the time you get. But if we started it off at three dollars, maybe we'd only have to go to five dollars, maybe. But that's that's what I was thinking about. Um the other thing I was wondering about looking at this is outside the city, um higher rates, that makes sense. I uh don't think there are very many uh meters outside. I just wonder if that's significant.
Um there are not very many. They are up above um. On, yeah, above Wagner.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And I think there's some on the outside outskirts of talent as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Because I I've often wondered this. So. You know, when when the city of talent went from treating their own water and delivering their own water and then building the line. The tap line into Medford. Now, we have two basic buckets, really. We have. We have the cost of buying the water, the treated water. And having it delivered. And then we have the cost of just maintaining our delivery system. Those are the two main costs that we have to. Bear plus the. The loans that we took to to tie into Medford and the loans we took to build the.
New reservoir, correct.
So what occurs to me is that. It may be necessary at some point in time to allow for more. Tie into our system. From outside the area, certainly as we bring in urban reserves. And I don't want, I don't want to confuse my. My points with that. I mean, we know that's gonna happen at some point in time, but at some point in time. Uh you know, underground water uh is a growing concern, and there may be a time when. The obvious tie-in would be into either Phoenix or Talent or whatever. Is there a plan for us to manage the outside city resources in a different way? And in thinking about that, or are we just making the outside city um. Plan commensurate with the plan, you know, what I'm just as as usual, higher. Just a little bit higher than the city. Actually, it's quite a bit higher, but.
It's exactly double.
Yeah, um so is that, did have. Has that ever been a topic of conversation inside? Is there ever any pressure from outside of the community to add to the system? I just want to know if we're, if that's a thing.
I think this might be a good one to have Robert involved in this conversation, um because I know that the outside city customers, they have their own specific um. Pipelines that service them.
And a pump, I believe.
Yeah, and I don't know. You know, what the cost would it would be to replace it. I, it does it does need to be discussed.
Okay, if we can just get it on in the queue, in the queue of your light load. That's of that, of course. I I don't even think, I mean, if there's no urgency, I just I just wonder if there's a point at which we should consider that. And I and again, I don't even know if we get any pressure from outside. Um to 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 talk about, but I do know there was. A failed pump at one point in time, and there was a. A misunderstanding of who was responsible for that, but.
Yeah, um with the outside city customers, I don't think we can add anymore, because I do believe Medford Water would not allow us to do so. Um if you were gonna add any additional users to the system, you would probably require. Expansion of your urban growth boundary or utilizing um buildable lands in the city of talent.
That's, that's good to know. Because and I I know that the outside and for, you know, for anybody that's listening, the the outside water customers were grandfathered in, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so since then, policies have changed is what I'm hearing you say.
I don't think it has really changed. I do, I think the Medford Water Commission policy of not allowing additional customers has been in in play for. Decades.
Okay, well, I don't want to get us in the weeds. I just uh it's it's it was a pretty big conversation um. Couple of years back, just, you know, the outside customers and the future of of. And I'm just uh wanting to make sure Gary and Tessa, you know that that has been a conversation and that we probably should look at it at some point in time.
I think taking a look at the capital plan for water is probably the biggest component right there. Okay, we need to take a look at that.
I would just want to make sure that they were paying their commensurate. And they are. It does propose that. All right, thank you.
So just to piggyback on what you're saying, um you know, the the buildable lands in inside the city, that's all SDCs, right? For the additional water structure.
Yep, any new service would be would required, be required to pay the systems development charge. Not only to the city of talent, but to the Medford Water Commission as well, so they're paying too.
Right, I think those costs are covered. You're talking about. Like outside of the city limits, trying to get in. I'm just wondering if that were the case, wouldn't it be a kind of like an SDC situation, like a new development?
It could be, but um but you know, it, we've got to be careful about not confusing. SDCs and new impact to our system and the SDC is covering that cost. And then what this would be covering. Would be something different, right? It's not, this is not um to be confused with that same fund source. And really the same use.
This is a brand new fee to help us make ends meet, basically.
For in the capital and the in my opinion, the capital plan, the way it is, is pretty bare bones. Um like AC pipe replacement. I think a couple of years, we had like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That doesn't buy you very many feet of pipe to replace, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Hmm, so it's.
The inflation and all that and the supply chain issues, as you mentioned. I know that you, the electric. Electric is having the same exact issue. Um well, I my. My questions are satisfying, are yours?
Yeah, yeah, I I've just, I'm thinking about this fee as you could call it anything you want, but it's basically the idea is to meet those capital costs. And it's a, it's a flat fee on all customers.
And it's gonna be specific to the capital, because as soon as we do the billing, that that amount will be earmarked and moved over on a monthly basis.
Right.
But it's different than SBC capital, correct?
Correct.
So I want to make sure we don't miss accidentally misinform the public about that and um. And and it would be good to get those definitions clear, clear.
And SDCs are, it's basically, it's a fee to pay for, it's it's basically growth paying for growth. That's what an SDC fee is. No, we would not be collecting SDCs on existing water meters at all.
Great, gee, thank you. This is really informative. Thank you, Tessa. There's some advantages of hiring somebody out of the Medford Water Commission.
I know who to ask.
All right.
So this slide, as I mentioned before at the beginning, this compares the status quo and the three alternatives at. Zero, five thousand gallons, ten thousand gallons, and twenty thousand gallons. So that you can see the impact across all of those. And again, there's multiple moving pieces with fixed charges um on alternative three. And then with revised tiers and alternative two and alternative one, we start to charge for that zero to three thousand use. Um so we know that during these times, there's a lot of um people trying to control their water bills, so. Um what staff was working with Medford Water to do is. Purchase some. Efficient uh incentivize uh or these efficient uh fixtures for customers. Um a hundred bathroom sink aerators, showerheads, and kitchen sink aerators. And they estimate that could save approximately one point three mil- million gallons of water a year. Um so we'll have those available for customers um uh going forward. Sounds like that we'll purchase those supplies and have those. So that's worked into the cost as well.
Cool.
I'm I'm wondering, I'm sorry, maybe you said this already that. Or maybe, I'm sorry, maybe it's on your next slide, I don't know. As far as the the new water meters and the idea that those are going to be um less uh. Time consuming for staff to check and all of that. I'm just wondering if that's incorporated and how how it is incorporated, if so.
We haven't worked any efficiencies as far as. That goes, uh but I'm I'm, we could chat about that. I'm not sure which system here.
Yeah, I guess I I the question would just be, has it been considered or not? And what's, you know, just like, what's the feeling? Would it be significant or not significant or?
You mean as far as staff's time savings?
Yeah.
Um. I think it's not necessarily for staff time savings. Um I think it would be more along the lines of providing the customer possibly with more data to help them. Um. Use less water. If we go down the AMI path, maybe might be able to have an opportunity to give the customer to log online and take a look. Oh, gosh, you know, I've I've already used five thousand gallons per month this month, or, oh, by the way, I see I might have a water leak. Those that that would help our customers.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
More real time, though.
More, yeah, that's what we're hoping for. It all depends on how it pencils out when we um get the people to respond to the RFP that's. I do believe coming out shortly.
Right, typically, what I've seen with clients I've worked with is your IT costs will go up slightly. Um because we're using uh with AMI, you're gonna be using more software, data, cloud servers and things like that, so. Any operational savings for raw labor typically is. It's a wash, at least what what I've seen.
Okay, okay.
And that was kind of the presentation we got for the meters, was that we were gonna save some labor, but um. But I don't think labor is that big, big of a percentage of our overall cost impact of the water system is.
And now it is, it is, we're, we are having failing meters and we're having a lot of re-reads, we're having a lot of. Um issues where we have to go out and double check, things like that. It's. Where our meters are at its end of useful lives.
So. So it might, so it will impact, um it will make a difference in the labor. Was then, is that what you were asking?
Yeah, but I guess um, yeah, so the the the, yeah, the operational cost of having. uh, end of life meters is significant, is what you're saying. And um that when we have better meters, that cost will kind of go away.
Yes, we can actually find more efficiencies with our staff. Right now, we're, we're, you're not going to expect an operational, but what you've been projecting for operational to reduce significantly.
Is, you're not.
I don't see that, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, did you say that we, that we should get on a schedule of reviewing this every five years?
Yeah, uh, that's recommended, yeah, typically, just because assumptions change, right? Two to five years is typically uh what we do. Would, I think Medford is every year.
Every year.
Some people do do every year, um, just a smaller scope, um, and you make smaller adjustments typically.
And while I'm here, I'll be uh monitoring it as well, because if I see something that is unusual, I definitely will be having a conversation with Gary and possibly making a phone call to HDR, whoever would be uh working with us on that.
It would be great to build into our systems, because I know that you all are looking at improving our systems at City Hall. It would be great to build in some sort of calendar like trigger. Because I, I mean, over the years, we've, I've, you know, I've seen, we rely on staff for these updates, right? And so I've seen intention and I've, I've seen uh in the past it talked about. Um, but if it's not on a calendar sometimes, and it's not just the water CIP, there's other CIPs that, that slip through the slip through the calendar, maybe go longer than they should, et cetera. It'd be nice to have some sort of system. Maybe a calendar, I mean, I don't want to get in the weeds on this, but you know, maybe something that we can all look at, that we can all see. So we can all be triggered when, we can all get triggered when when we're falling behind on if we're, or if something is slipping through the cracks uh for plan improvements, et cetera.
Maybe you're, maybe thinking, maybe um staff coming up with some kind of a multi-year Gantt chart to explain, you know, when things need, need to happen.
Mm-hmm, and, yeah.
Very visual.
And memorializing it in some way, you know? So that uh, so that it, it, it consistently, I mean, when, when you're talking about things that are going to impact us in 10 to 20 years, you know, you're going to be handing that off, you know, so. Anyway.
The other thing I'm wondering, Tessa, whether this would work for you is like, so like maybe every five years we'd have to reexamine the structure and everything. But maybe the way the structure is set up is like, you know, for every year, you're going to increase, like for that, the example of that fee, it was increasing a dollar, maybe it would be like a range, you know, between 75 cents to a dollar twenty five. And you could make a determination on like, how are we doing? Like to choose something within that range to get budget for the, for the budget process to approve. Is that like something that you'd say like, oh, I would really love that flexibility as a financial planner, or, oh, no, that's a pain?
Um, I wouldn't say it's a pain, I, I think that, let's say, for instance, um you, you put in a range, you want to make sure that the choices are defendable. That's the important part is that if you give a range, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of a little loose and you'd have, the person sitting in the, in the chair would have to justify the choice that they made and that takes work.
Uh huh, okay, so it's better just to every five years, this is what it's going to be unless it's really bad.
Unless something comes up and, you know, we make that phone call and
that makes sense, thanks.
So that was the content of it. So again, we're not asking for any, and we can't do any, anything. Um, but we're looking for any direction and trying to um there's anything we want to get off the table or explore more, we were anticipating to come back next uh Wednesday, um, the seventh to move forward so that we can uh stay with um the implementation in March. Uh, because staff will need to, depending on the rate structure, they may need to do testing. Um, and to make sure we keep track, uh, Medford does theirs in, in March as well. So we are trying to ideally keep um that schedule.
Fair, let's go. Um, I do like the idea of like explaining how, like you did when um, how the rates would be designed to discourage people from like, uh, you know, using a lot of water in the summer months to garden instead of, instead of having drought resistant gardening to encourage that kind of thing. And um I also liked, you know, I think it would help us explain if there were maybe, if it isn't a lot of work. Um, examples of like, you know, an average, like a four person family. This is, you know, the effect um for uh, uh, an older adult living alone. This would be the, the effect, you know, kind of thing. So it's clear, I, I do like the idea of um kind of keeping, you know, people's water basic needs. You know, should be something that's not as expensive as having this, you know, you know, juggling or gardening.
Ever, yeah, you're talking about. Best cost for need as opposed to best cost for want, right? I mean, in terms of water usage, yeah.
Said that very nicely, that's what I meant. Luxury water versus bare necessity water.
I will say the, the demographic aspect to some of those, maybe, um, I'll have to work with Tessa to see, but I'm not sure as far as
Just indicative.
But yeah, I could have some.
Some people, I'm not going to hold you to it, but just to, to give people an idea.
You know, it's different from city to city. I've, I've seen that, like, um, like if you have, like, let's say Central Point might be a good example, where you have um houses on zero lot lines and you'd single family residential and they have very small side yards, very small backyards. You know, the single family residential water usage on average is completely different than maybe Jacksonville, where you have a single family residential on two acres. So it's, it's going to be interesting to see if we can pull that data out of our system.
Plus, what has always been a challenge in talent is we have TID being delivered to a lot of residents in this community. And, and um so in the summer months, some of those larger yards that you're describing are actually being watered off the ditch. And um, and so it really skews our efficiency um measures. I know that we did a study, I don't know, twenty fifteen or sixteen, along with Medford Water Commission uh for, for who, what city was most efficient, which one? We looked really, really good, but we also had TID on, online and, and um so that, it is a challenge for sure.
Then one final thing. What's really important when we make, when you all make your decision um in regard to water rates is we want to try to do it as timely as possible. We want to avoid um implementing new rates in like May or June, because that becomes huge sticker shop for our customers. And we try to implement it in the cool, wetter months is our, is our, is optimal.
One more thing, another, if, if it's possible to give the, maybe some variations on the one, two, three, four, five, uh, that, that additional fee thing, like you're saying.
Forget it, front loading first.
Loading a little bit more, like maybe $3 or $4 and what that would look like over if you can, you know, the 10 years, just again, indicative of after the five.
And we'll have to look at the numbers, but we do want to um be mindful of the fact when you move from the meter charges that are ratioed. So because of the potential capacity on a two or three inch meter is greater, they pay a greater share of those capacity costs. If we move to a fixed per account cost, more of those costs, then it will impact smaller meters more.
Is there a way to tier that as well?
You, we could, yeah, look at a um uh, following the same fixed meter ratios, yeah.
I, that, I'd be interested in that.
Okay.
That's.
We, we did this for, for an example, I'm, you run into, then again, your schedules. We try to be mindful of the difficulty when a customer looks at it, sees all these. So it's a balancing act for, forever, you know, to consider.
Any other questions from anybody? Well, this has been um one of the better presentations on water over in my experience. And uh so uh the investment to bring in your firm has been a, a good one. And I'm, no, no surprise, you, you did come from the water department in Medford. I feel much more informed. I do actually have a question about um the tanks. So um, have we received all of the reservoirs? I'm sorry, I called the tanks, the reservoirs. I mean, the reservoir that we built recently in, in our history, what it was about seven years ago, maybe. We received a grant from the state, I think it paid for about a third. Did we, did, do we know whether or not all of that was paid for? And then I thought I recalled too, that there was something in the grant agreement where there was where there was an opportunity to get another grant for it. And I just would like that to be looked at, just to make sure that whatever, um, whatever that agreement that we had with the state.
Is it for Belmont?
No, it's for the, no, it's for the one above wrap.
Okay.
Yeah, that's for the one above wrap. And um business organ, I think, is, I remember Marta Taranty is, she'll be the one to call. She is the one that um she's the one that uh did, you know, was the sort of the liaison with the state.
So you're thinking about possibly getting another grant to offset the, the.
I just want to make sure that we, because it seemed like there was a second piece to it. And I just, you know, again, I, um, once it gets approved, we sort of sometimes don't see it again. So just to make sure that all of that was, was tidied up. And then the other question I have is, we put that tank, we put that reservoir, one of the most big motivators for, for buying that new reservoir was the peak, reducing peak and all of that other efficiency stuff, which I think has been great, but but another one was that uh one of the tanks on Belmont was, one of the reservoirs on Belmont was failing. Um, are, and we're still using it. Has anybody, when was the last time that was evaluated? Do we know?
That's a problem.
That's our operations question.
That's a problem.
Gary, can we um ask that question too? It'd be good to get an update on that.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm certain that Public Works is doing a very good job of monitoring that. But if there is a point at which it needs to be, when it actually needs to be closed. And by the way, for the record, just so we don't confuse anybody, we sort of knew that it would go on for a little bit longer, but this was a kind of planning ahead. Uh, but I do think it'd be good to check in to see how that's doing and whether or not we would see that. Yeah, since we're talking about water, it was kind of the historical things that stick out in my mind. And I could be wrong about some of it, I might be remembering it wrong, but I just would like to check on it now. Um, all right, are there, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. I've got a couple of loaves of sourdough waiting to be baked. Oh, there's no meeting, all right, well, we're just going to go home and I'm going to go bake some bread.
Thank you again, guys.
Thanks so much.